Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the School Board meeting of the Frederick County Public Schools to Order. Today is April 16th and the time is 6:02 PM. Welcome. Mr. Bell, I understand that we have Mr. Sturdivan on the line?
We do. Mr. Sturdivan's requested to participate at the meeting remotely for a personal matter, specifically...
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the School Board meeting of Frederick County Public Schools to Order. Today is April 16th and the time is...
Mr. Sturdivan, would you mind turning down your YouTube?
Got it.
Due to an illness and YouTube situation in Frederick County.
We have a motion to approve Mr. Sturdivan for attendance remotely. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, we have an agenda before us. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. We have an agenda. And, Mr. Bell?
I would like to make a... I'm sorry. I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. One, to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, administrative leave, dismissals, resignations, information-only substitutes, tutors, and volunteers pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A dot one. And that's all. And I move that the board re... Oh, no. That's it. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. We have a motion on the table to reconvee or to adjourn and reconvene in closed session. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Saying none opposed, the motion passes. We are now in closed session. We'll reconvene at 7:00 PM. Mr. Bell?
I move that the Board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
And we have a motion to return from closed session. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
I move that, to the best of each Board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board.
All right. We have a motion to certify the closed session.
Second.
And it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? And, Madam Clerk, can I trouble you for a roll call vote, please?
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Funas?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
All right. And motion passes.
I move that the Board resets its meeting until 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. We are recessed until 7:00 PM.
I move that the Board reconvene its meeting.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor to reconvene after closed or after our recess and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor certify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. We have reconvened from recess. And it looks like that we have...
Madam Chair, can we check to make sure Mr.?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Sorry to hear you.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
No problem. And we do have some items to approve out of closed session. Mr. Bell?
I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent Dr. Hummer.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor to approve the personnel decisions as recommended by Dr. Hummer. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor certify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, the motion passes. And ladies and gentlemen, we have an agenda before us, but before we do, would you please join me in a moment of silence? And before we continue with our regular meeting, we've started a tradition here at the Frederick County School Board of welcoming a student or group of students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And today, we are very honored to have the FFA, the award-winning, very much award-winning students from the Charando FFA to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please come forward and lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for that. And ladies and gentlemen, we have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, it's the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Yes.
Words are important. We have a consent agenda before us. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, the consent agenda is approved. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, we have four proclamations to read. If I may?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Whereas public school volunteers... Oh, sorry. Proclamation Public School Volunteer Week, April 22nd to 26th, 2024. Whereas public school volunteers contribute unselfishly to the success of Frederick County Public Schools students, teachers, and support staff. And whereas school volunteers support students and teachers inside and beyond the classroom in many ways, regardless of the hour and without monetary gain. And whereas school volunteers act dependently, creatively, and collaboratively to accomplish whatever tasks they are assigned. And whereas school volunteers stretch school district resources to ensure that all Frederick County students receive an excellent education. And whereas school volunteers exhibit care, model the best in citizenship, and create a climate that fosters learning and a love of education. And whereas thousands of volunteers are spending countless hours serving Frederick County Public Schools as chaperones, mentors, after-school tutors, club leaders, booster club members, PTA and PTO members, guest speakers, classroom helpers, and in countless other ways. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares the week of April 22nd to 26th, 2024, as Public School Volunteer Week, and urges all citizens to become aware of the volunteer opportunities available with Frederick County Public Schools, and to recognize the dedication and hard work of local volunteers serving students and staff in our schools, dated this 16th day of April, 2024.
Thank you. And do we have any volunteers here with us today? Want to stand and come forward? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bell. We'll go on to the next one. All right. Thanks to all our volunteers that are out there, though. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Our second proclamation is School Lunch Hero Day, May 3rd, 2024. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas Frederick County Public Schools' school nutrition employees are committed to providing nutritious, well-balanced, and reasonably-priced meals to thousands of children each day. And whereas those who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our students through daily interaction and contribute to their ability to learn. And whereas Frederick County Public Schools' school nutrition employees provide a caring environment where students may receive and enjoy nutritious breakfasts and lunches. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares May 3rd, 2024, as School Lunch Hero Day, and encourages everyone to recognize and acknowledge the important role school nutrition employees have in student learning and success, dated this... This says 19th day. It's not the 16th. Yeah. Dated this 16th day of April, 2024.
Do we have any of our school lunch personnel in the room? Nope.
All right.
All right. Moving on.
Proclamation number three. This is National Teacher Day, May 7th, 2024. Whereas teachers mold our future citizens through their guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds and abilities. And whereas teachers are expected to provide quality education services to all children, no matter what their backgrounds or abilities. And whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. And whereas teachers spend countless hours outside their classrooms preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling, and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, role models, motivators, and mentors. And whereas our community recognizes that its teachers are providing quality education services to our children and serving as outstanding role models. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares May 6 to 7... Sorry. May 6 to 10, 2024, as Teacher Appreciation Week, and May 7 as 2024, as National Teacher Day, and encourages all residents to recognize the important role teachers play in the development of children and the quality of life enjoyed in our community, dated this 16th day of Proclamation National School Nurse Day, May 8th, 2024. April, 2024.
I feel fairly certain we have some teachers in the audience. Could you please stand and be recognized? Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Whereas school nurses promote and protect our children by administering preventative and primary health care, and whereas all students have a right to have their health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas children today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses promote healthy living by emphasizing the importance of balanced diet, proper hygiene, and daily exercise. And whereas school nurses advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents, and health care providers on behalf of children's health. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares May 8th, 2024, as National School Nurse Day, and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses and recognizes their efforts to meet the needs of students by effectively delivering health care in our schools, dated this 16th day of April, 2024.
And I do think we have some school nurses in the audience as well. Can you please stand and be recognized?
Thank you for reading those, Mr. Bell, and thank you to all of those that were recognized via these proclamations. Next is my next favorite part of the meeting, and that is student recognition as well as staff awards. So, Dr. Hummer, I'll turn that part over to you.
All right, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. Let's just take a moment to just look around the room for all the great accomplishments that we're getting ready to celebrate. Thanks to all our students, all our staff, all of our administrators. And this is a good reminder of why we do what we do. So, thank you all. It's great to see you. So, welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect of each individual who is being recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward before your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with me and Mrs. Klein for a photograph. Then move to the right and remain at the front, and we'll take a photo of the entire group being recognized. Thanks again, and we'll head on down with Mrs. Klein and myself.
And first off tonight, we are going to start with Destination Imagination. In March, the Stonewall Elementary Destination Imagination team competed against teams from across the region in Richmond, Virginia. The focus for the team was the Service Learning Challenge. The Service Learning Challenge is designed to engage students in public service that addresses real-life community issues. Stonewall was awarded first place in the Service Learning category and first place in the Instant Challenge. Students have the opportunity to compete at Global's in Kansas City, Missouri later in the spring. So, we're going to start with the club sponsor, Mr. Joseph Saboda. And next up is the Future Business Leaders of America. We have a lot more to go. Students from Robert E. Ailer Middle School competed in the FBLA Spring Leadership Conference that was held in March. The following students qualified to compete in the National FBLA Convention, which will be held this summer. We'll start off with Niaja Patton, who earned first place in the categories of Digital Citizenship and FBLA Concepts.
Yeah. I said both. Yeah.
Next up, Eli Piper, earned first place Exploring Technology and fourth place in Annual Chapter Activities. And next up, Rachel Meek, first place FBLA Mission and Pledge. Dreiden Estep, second place Business Ethics. Brianna Zalaski, third place Career Exploration. Sophia Horseman, third place for Learning Strategies and fifth place for FBLA Concepts. Piercelyn Mozlowski, third place Critical Thinking. Kaitlin Nichols earned third place in Marketing Mix Challenge and fourth place in Leadership. James Rogers, fourth place Running an Effective Meeting. Landon Wilkins, fourth place Business Etiquette. Kendall Banks, fourth place Digital Citizenship. Macy McCall, fourth place Community Service. Alondra Flores, fifth place Digital Citizenship. And next up, we have DECA. Students from Charando High School competed in the Virginia DECA State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach this March. Students will have the opportunity to travel to the international competition in Anaheim, California to compete at the national level. Results are as follows. Taking fourth place in the Virginia DECA Sports and Entertainment Operations Research, we have a team of three here tonight. And earning second place in the Virginia DECA Sales Project, we have a team of two. And next up, we have FFA Awards. FFA students from Charando High School traveled to Virginia Tech to participate in the state FFA Meets Evaluation Career Development Event, and to Damascus, Virginia, to participate in the state parliamentary procedure career development event. Results are as follows. We have, first off, a second-place overall team. They earned second place in state FFA Meets Evaluation Career Development They earned second place in State FFA Meets Evaluation Career Development Event. And this is a team of four with us tonight. Rebecca Stout. And Rebecca also earned a third high individual. Keller Cooley, who also earned a 10th high individual. Mason Patterson, 11th high individual. And Emma Wise Carver, 13th high individual. And next up, we have a team that placed second in Virginia in terms of the State Parliamentary Procedure Career Development Event. And we have several of them with us tonight. We'll start off with Kayden Shoemaker. Keller Cooley. Mason Patterson. Morgan Legg. Leah Stout. Sarah Hawkins. Caleb Green. Corinne Cooley. And Emma Wise Carver. And next up, we have the Frederick County Public Schools Honorary Award. Sidney Gumm is receiving the Frederick County Public Schools Honorary Award for the dedication she's shown in her goal of providing books to the community. Sidney has collected over 650 books that she distributes to little free libraries across Frederick County. Sidney has a love of reading and wants to ensure children have access to books to further help them in and out of school. Sidney is a member of FCC LA and recently presented this initiative as her project at the state conference. FCC LA stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America and is a nationwide student organization that focuses on community service and student leadership. Okay, and next up is the Apple Award. The Apple Award is given to a teacher who has either achieved something which significantly contributes to their school and community and/or uses creative or innovative instructional techniques and/or goes above and beyond for the student. And I think you're going to hear that this person does all of the above. The recipient of the Apple Award is Mrs. Michelle Pingly. She was nominated by a fellow staff member. The staff member says, "At Gainesboro Elementary, it is well-known that Michelle Pingly is an incredible 5th grade teacher. Still, a better-kept secret is that she is an incredible mentor and resource to other teachers. At the start of the 2023-24 school year, Michelle prepared me for success as a long-term 5th grade substitute teacher. She willingly gave me the resources I needed to teach my class, including tips and tricks she has mastered over the years. The knowledge that Michelle has given me is invaluable. She creates hands-on, engaging lessons using the technology of today with ease. She spends countless hours improving her lessons to encourage critical thinking and student engagement. Above all, Michelle is kind and humble. She would never ask for attention or accolades. Instead, she would rather spend time serving behind the scenes before and after school. Just a few of the ways she serves Gainesboro are by seasonally decorating the school cafeteria and bulletin boards, developing a school store program while simultaneously teaching her SCA students how to fill the orders or introducing our school to the St. Jude's Math -a-Thon. I would not have been able to teach a year of 5th grade without her guidance and attention, and for that, my entire class and myself are forever grateful." Thank you, Mrs. Pingly. And next up, we have the Inspiration Award. The Inspiration Award is given to a staff member who did something inspirational for the students, staff, parents, or community as a whole. And the recipient of the Inspiration Award this evening is Mr. Travis Henderlite. A parent has nominated him for this award, and the parent writes, "Mr. Travis Henderlite, bus driver of number 107 for GES, deserves to be recognized. He greets the students as they get on the bus, shows kindness, and understands kids are kids. He shows the student respect, and in turn, the student shows him respect. He is always kind. If an issue comes up on the bus, he speaks to the student in a normal tone, without an elevated voice, being firm but fair. He is my son's favorite driver for the last... He has been my son's driver for the last two years, and I hope he continues to be his driver for the next three years of elementary. Congratulations."
Thank you, everyone, for your attention, and congratulations to all the award recipients. This is huge. So, huge accomplishments, tremendous. At this time, we're going to continue with our meeting, but before we do so, we'd like to give you all the opportunity to go on about your evenings if you would like. And so if you'd like to rise and go ahead and head out for the rest of your lovely evening, that's fine. All right, we'll continue on with our agenda for this evening, and we have an administrative appointment. Dr. Hummer, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to call up our new Coordinator of Contracted Facility Services, Mr. Robert Baze. If you can come on up, please. Let's give him a round of applause. He brings over 20 years of facility services, experience working in the maintenance and construction field, with specialized training in AWS welding and NFPA 70E, as well as being forklift, MEWP, DOT, and OSHA certified. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Baze.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to getting started next Wednesday. I just thank you again.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hummer, and welcome. We look forward to having you join the team. Thanks for coming tonight. All right, and ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the point in our meeting for citizen comments. And the Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, the total time allowed for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state their name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or the appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School board meetings are tape-recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. And it looks like we have two individuals that have signed up for public comment. And the first is Brian Nury.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Hummer, my name is Brian Nury. I'm a resident of the Upakin District. It's ironic that I come up today because today is National Librarian Day. In the March 11 instructional committee meeting during the report on the year-long, a year-old policy that we've set forth in Frederick County in compliance of 18.1... I'm sorry, 22.1-16.8 concerning objectionable and sexually explicit materials in the schools, a comment was made concerning a very bad misquote of the ALA president and also reference to campaign promises concerning editing school books from schools. Found it particularly ironic because a bill had gone forth before the Senate and the House, SB 235, asking that a certain section of the original bill in 2022 to be re-added. This section states that, quote, "The provisions of this act that established the policy shall not be construed as requiring or providing the censoring of books in public elementary secondary schools as signed by the governor." The bill was then vetoed to re-insert that into the bill because the governor, quote, "Current law unequivocally affirms that the adoption of these model policies by a school board should not be interpreted as requiring or providing the censorship of books for public and elementary schools." So, we need to stop worrying about pop culture concerns when we have issues with enrollment projections and a fourth high school. Also, concerning a certain behavior from the last school board meeting, I would like to remind the chair and vice chair about Policy 115P, the Order of Business and Decorum and Rules. According to the Rules of Order, the board shall observe Robert's Rules of Order, and according to the Special Board Rules of Order, at school meetings, it shall be the duty of the chairman and the presiding officer to provide order and decorum at all times. Robert's Rules of Order defines decorum as proper respect for not only board members but also members of the audience or anyone else. So that under Policy Number 119P, Guidelines for Public Comment, Section 4, under recognition of the chairman, a speaker must clearly state his or her name, residing district, and the subject of the comments. That person did not do so. She also violated Number 7, violation concerning the decorum. And also, under Section 7, violation of these guidelines will result in the chairman ruling speakers out of order. Now, working with my Student Congress kids, I've seen quite a few of my kids deal with breaches of decorum properly. So I recommend that the board also do the same. Thank you.
And we have one other speaker signed up to speak this evening. It's Ms. Pam Onok. Onok.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am a resident of the Gainesboro District. I'm also an employee of Frederick County Public Schools as the Coordinator of School Health Services. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for the proclamation for National School Nurse Day and recognizing the impact that school nurses have on our students and being valuable members of the educational team. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And that concludes the list of individuals who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Yes.
I'm a student at Millbrook High School. I live in the Shawnee District, and I feel that Board Member Miles Atkins does not represent what we should look for in a school board member. The future and current voters of Frederick County are looking for someone who shows integrity, responsibility, and good moral judgment for the future siblings, students, and staff in Frederick County Public Schools. Miles Atkins' repeated instances of poor judgment over the past two years have taken away from the accomplishments of the students and staff of Frederick County. You have repeatedly stated that you will do better. However, the evidence presented in local, national, and international news has spoken to the contrary. The charges you have faced, not only in counties or states but federally, have shown that your attempts to do better have either been wildly unsuccessful or you have just been saying that to save face. In order to have someone on the school board who represents the values that we, as a community, would like to see, I, alongside my peers, some of which who have accompanied me tonight, are respectfully asking you, Mr. Atkins, to please resign your position on the school board.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? All right, seeing no others, Dr. Hummer, I'll turn it over to you for your superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take this time to thank our school board for acknowledging the volunteers, lunch staff, nurses, and teachers. What a great month to recognize such great individuals and all of their hard work. We have a lot of wonderful and dedicated individuals who work tirelessly for our students and our community. With their support, it helps us run smoothly and efficiently for the best interests of all students. So thank you, school board, for doing that. It's very much appreciated. Lastly, I continuously and genuinely feel extremely lucky to have inherited such great students and staff. Seeing all the great work that they are accomplishing brings me such joy and happiness, which is a reminder that we have numerous events happening in April and May where schools will be showcasing all of the great things that our students have done throughout the course of the year, which includes one of the greatest events of the year, high school graduation. I hope all of you have time to take time to come out and experience this event with us, to one or all three. We want to be able to celebrate this tremendous accomplishment of all of our students' academic careers together. Thank you, and that is all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hummer. I'll kind of pile on that just a little bit. It is really overwhelming to sit up here and see all the amazing students we have and the award-winning students, and it's not just in the state, it's in the nation. So, that's just very huge. So, we're doing great things. Our students are doing great things. So, thank you, Dr. Hummer. And seeing as we have no unfinished business, I'll move on into new business. And first, we have our committee reports. First up is the Personnel Committee meeting.
A meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on April 8, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:33 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Freckley gave a staffing update for 2024, including vacancies and vacancies filled as of 3/27/2024. She also discussed the two new HR supervisor positions, explaining the hiring process for administrators, and shared information on required background checks for staff and volunteers. Mrs. Anderson reported on additional full-time equivalent positions in the Northwest Region Educational Programs. And Ms. Camery discussed the contract award of health and wellness services at the Frederick County Public School Clinic. The meeting adjourned at 5:05 PM. The meeting adjourned at 5:05 PM. Additional details regarding information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from the board members about information shared at the Personnel Committee meeting held on April 8? There are two action items. Number one, recommended the full board approval, the contract award to Valley Regional Enterprises for health and wellness services on an amount of $650,000. Ms. Chairman, are we here motion to approve?
We have a motion on the floor to approve, as indicated, and it's been properly seconded. And Madam Clerk, if you don't mind giving us a rising count since this is quite a large amount of money.
Sure. Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Funas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
All right. And the motion passes.
Action Item Two, recommend the full board approval of minutes from the Personnel Committee meeting held on April 8, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes. It has been properly seconded. And any discussion? Forgot that the last time. I skipped, seeing no discussion. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Funas.
Thank you.
All right. And next up, we have the Instruction Committee Report. Ms. White?
A meeting of the Instruction Committee of Frederick County School Board was held on April 9, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 6:04 PM, or 6:06 PM, and a copy of the meeting minutes have been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. Myers, Dr. Crawford, and Mr. Thompson shared information about the proposed Data Science Lab School, which will be funded through grants and be housed in the Dow J. Howard Center. If the grant application gets approved in late April, Ms. Wagner discussed the Elementary Educator Lab School opportunity in partnership with James Madison University and Laurel Ridge Community College. She explained that there is no tuition, no fees, and no material cost to students, and shared the student eligibility requirements. Ms. Wagner gave an update on the Virginia Literacy Act, including high-quality instruction materials, HQIM, supplemental and intervention programs, training for staff, and the Division Literacy Plan. Dr. Huseis shared information about artificial intelligence and the ways Frederick County Public Schools is teaching students and educators to be responsible, the responsible use of AI. Dr. Myers reviewed the high school graduation requirements for the standard diploma and the Advanced Studies Program diploma. Ms. Post discussed the Perkins Plan, which provides federal funds to increase focus on academic achievement of CTE students, strengthens connection between secondary and post-secondary education, improves state and local accountability, removes barriers for special population, and promotes work-based learning opportunities for students. Dr. Sandy reviewed the Special Instruction Services Annual Plan, which provides funding to support FCPS Special Education Programming. The meeting adjourned at 7:43 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the meeting are included in the meeting minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from the board members about information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on April 9?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I am super excited to see the Data Science Lab School. CTE is such an important part of our curriculum, and our society as a whole is moving to a more digital world, as I'm sure we're all aware. So this keeps our students at the tip of the spear. So I'm really looking forward to seeing the outcomes from that school.
Yeah, this meeting was very much informational. Our educators and directors are very well-versed, and they put a lot of time into preparing these grants and preparing us to be prepared with all of the information. So it's just humbling all of the knowledge that they have and the hard work that they do to ensure these programs get up off the ground. I'm especially excited also about the Data Science Lab School and the Elementary Educator Lab School opportunity. So we have opportunities to grow our own. We get first dibs, so that's really exciting. I do wish some of the requirements to go into these programs would be adjusted because I think that we have a lot of talent and our GPA doesn't necessarily reflect people's talents. And I think that in the future, going forward, for people who approve these grants, policymakers can see that there are so many other people that could benefit from these programs that are not necessarily have the 3.0 GPA. So yeah, with that, we have three recommendations coming out. The first would be, I recommend the full board approve the Perkins Plan for a 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the Perkins Plan for the 2024-2025 school year. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Second, I would recommend the full board approve the Special Education Annual Plan for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to recommend the full board approve the Special Education Annual Plan, as Ms. White stated. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the final recommendation would be for the full board to approve the meeting minutes for the Instruction Committee meeting held on April 9, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all motions pass. Thank you, Ms. White. All right, and next we have, on the agenda for new business, we have the superintendent designated for the VDOE signatures. Dr. Hummer? Oh, I am so sorry.
My chance in the spotlight.
Mr. Atkins, please, Building and Grounds. My apologies. Please proceed.
A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of Frederick County Public Schools was held on April 15, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:34 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Davis discussed the Capitol Project's highlights, including the Sherrando High School Interior Painting Project, the James Wood Middle School Interior Painting Project, the fire alarm projects scheduled for 2024, and notable upcoming projects. Mr. Kenny gave an update on the completion of the James Wood High School renovation. He explained that the outside area above the track was cleaned up, and that work is progressing in the multi-level gym addition, the new loading dock area, the future gym lobby, and the new wall reinforcement. Mr. Goodwin discussed the enrollments in September 2023 and March 2024 compared to the projections for September 2024. He also shared that the actual Frederick County Public Schools FCPS enrollment from September 30 of every year since 2011, as reported to the Virginia Department of Education, the VDOE, versus the Walden Cooper Project enrollments of those years. Mr. Chris Phillips from RRMM Architects gave a progress update on the proposed expansion opportunities at Middletown Elementary School and Jordan Springs Elementary School. He shared renderings for possible additions and discussed comparisons and figures for the current state of the building and the projected numbers after the expansion, as well as the projected budget. Dr. Hummer gave a CIP update and shared the next steps in the process. Ms. Camery discussed the contract award for the chiller replacement at the Dow J. Howard Center to Southern Air Inc. in the amount of $359,054. The meeting adjourned at 5:37 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on April 15? I'd just like to say, you know, Mr. Goodwin provided a lot of information about the enrollments that we have currently in our schools and the desperate need we have to expand our elementary schools, our middle school projections, and the busting at the seams high schools. It is apparent that we are going to need that fourth high school just to hold our population given a fair and adequate education to our students by reducing those teacher-to-student ratios and reducing those classroom sizes. It'll help curtail the disciplinary issues that we've seen in the schools while also providing an equitable education to all. I hope that members of the community will go ahead and look in our meeting minutes so that they can see the projections and where we're at currently. As far as the, where's it at? The Walden Cooper projections, we're right there in the ballpark. And where they're projecting us, we're actually a little bit over as far as our student population goes. It's apparent something needs to happen. So with that, I hope that our board supervisors think hard about funding this fourth high school so we can provide a better education to our students out there. If there's no other questions or comments?
Madam Chairwoman? I would like to second what Miles is stating about the fourth high school. I would encourage all of you and all of the constituents that are out there for Frederick County to reach out to the board of supervisors, reach out to us, the Board of Education or School Board. Regardless of which way you fall on the issue, have your voice heard. If you're for the fourth high school, let them know. If you're not, let them know. Because they won't make a decision, they can't make a decision in a vacuum. And the more information they have to make that decision, the better suited we'll all be in this county. I do think that we need a fourth high school. We have the grounds for it. We've had the grounds for it for eight years. I welcome anyone to reach out to me to voice their opinion. I would love to sit down with each and every board of supervisor as well to speak with them about their thoughts on the matter. I've emailed as such, and I await their response. Thank you very much.
There's no further questions. We do have two action items.
Oh, just a comment, just to third that. The experts cannot keep up with our projections. So I feel like that has to tell people something, that our actual numbers are even more than what is projected by experts. And then the experts are telling us, well, we should be able to project that because we live here and we know what's going on here. So if anything, that should let the constituents know and our funding body know that we really do have a problem with enrollment here, and we really do have a problem with space. This is not some made-up thing. This is not some way to get more funds or more space or what have you. This is a real crisis here, and the numbers are not lying. And so I would just like to go on record stating that I adamantly support a fourth high school. I ran my campaign on it. And until my last day next month, I will continue to support that. And I will be leaving the country for a brief time, but I still will be a taxpayer in Frederick County. And I will continue to support that, however long it takes. So that's at least three of us on this board. I think that we have some other members that support that. So that is the majority of the board, of this school board, that supports the fourth high school and continuing to support our projections. So, thank you.
And just one other closing comment. I've received some questions. Oh, sorry, Frank, go ahead. I missed you.
It's very important that we get the general consensus of our constituents on this matter of the fourth high school. There are many factors involved here. It's difficult to make a decision, but overall, the influx of the new population that is projected is going to make a difference so far as how our taxes are based and how much we're going to be paying. We need to really hear from the population to let us know how they feel about it.
Madam Chair, if I may, one more thing I forgot to mention?
Yes.
Just keep in mind, there are 16 trailers at Sherrando. 16. That's one-six. The security involved with that alone is a nightmare. My son is a student there. He spends his day in six of those trailers. So 16 trailers. That's why we want this fourth high school. Thank you.
Just one last final comment. I am a numbers person, very left-brain analytic. So if you give me the numbers, then I'll check your numbers. Then I'll go find some other numbers from a third-party source and check those. And I want to kind of expound upon the Walden Cooper group that we have spoken to in the minutes here. That is an organization out of UVA. That is, as Ms. White did say, they are the experts. They are the number crunchers. So it's not just their, but it's not just their projections that are saying that we are growing as a community. There are other sources, too, that businesses actually use to project whether or not they want to move to our community. So I'm sure anecdotally, as you've all looked around, you've seen a lot of really neat businesses come to our community. My favorite is the Crumble Cookie Company by Chance. But there it is. And there's a plethora of others. So I use that one as a little bit of a lighthearted. We're getting pretty serious here. I'd like to keep it light. I use that one as a lighthearted example. But I do highly, highly encourage you. I'll echo what Mr. Atkins said. The presentations that show the stoplight charts, the heat maps, as far as our progression and population growth, those are all available to you online on Frederick County Public Schools websites. I encourage you to go and take a good look at those. And also, too, don't take our word for it from the Walden Cooper Organization. They also publish their results online, free of charge. You can access those at any time through UVA. So really do encourage you, check us. Check our data and do your own due diligence. And then let us know what you think. Please do.
While we're on the subject, I was going to save this till last, but while we're on the subject, I have something I'd like to say. Basically, to my constituents, Stonewall, and I would like to take a moment to apologize to my constituents for saying yes to the fourth high school. There was much information given to us in forms of graphs, charts, photos, verbiage, and monetary figures, all based on preliminary projections, which may or may not come to pass. As my instincts have been telling me all along to say no, I was swayed enough to say yes, which I now regret. I will be unable to speak this upcoming week to the board of supervisors. So this is why I want to make this clear, I want to make this clear, how I really feel about this fourth high school. As I mulled it over, I would have to say it was a wrong choice on my part. Now is not a time for a new high school. We need to fix what we have and think of creative ways to accomplish this by supplying to the needs of our students and to the needs of the schools. Thank you.
All right. Seeing as there's no other comments, it looks like there's some action items, Mr. Atkins.
Two action items. First, I'd like to recommend the full board approve the contract award to Southern Air Inc. for the chiller replacement at Dow J. Howard in the amount of $359,054.
So moved. All right, we have a motion on the table and it's been properly seconded. And Madam Clerk, this is a large, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna make a correction. It says $359,059.
No, yours is incorrect, Mr. Bell.
Mine's incorrect.
I apologize. I just didn't want it to be incorrect in the public forum.
Okay.
I apologize, Miles.
No, I appreciate it.
Yes. Yeah.
Ms. White seconded that.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for the approval as state, or for the contract award as stated to Southern Air, and it's been properly seconded. And Madam Clerk, could I trouble you for a rising count? It's a large amount of money.
Sure. Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Funas?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdevent?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes seven non.
All right, excellent, thank you. And the motion passes. All right.
Second action item is I recommend the full board approve the minutes of the Building and Grounds meeting on April 15th, 2024.
So moved. All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes, and it's been properly seconded. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. All right, now it is time for the superintendent's report, so Dr. Hummer, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is the approval of my designees to sign in my stead, if I'm unavailable, for Dr. Angelo and Mr. Goodwin to do that. For next year, we will include this in the organizational meeting. This is something that we've done every June. We'll just push it to next January. So that is the motion that we have recommended before you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I motion that the board authorize Dr. James Angelo and Mr. Shane Goodwin to sign all VDOE education reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the superintendent.
I second.
We have a motion on the floor and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Is, Madam Chair?
Yes.
As long as they don't use the X and sign their name, I suppose it would be all right.
Right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Madam Chair, the next item that is on the agenda before you, there is a request for the current member of the FCEF School Board Representative, Mr. Bell. He had requested to step down, so I wanna see if there was any conversation about that and if there's any recommendation for a replacement for him.
So just to clarify, the reason I wish to step down, it's a meeting that takes place during the day. I teach during the day and I'm not able to attend this particular meeting. And this is a fundraising body to provide scholarship, I believe?
Scholarships as well as grants for teachers, yes.
Correct. As, as much as it pains me to not be able to, to be a part of that, it doesn't seem fair that if I can't attend a meeting and add my two cents that I should sit on that particular committee. So I gracefully stepped down from that, that committee.
Any further discussion? I would, and perhaps I might need some tutelage on how to properly do this, but I'd hate to make that decision this evening. I'd like to postpone definitely the decision for this, because I think I'd like to...
If I, if I may, Madam Chair, to make a recommendation, if that's okay. The next item on the agenda, which I'll get to in a second, is about appointing Mrs. White's replacement. And once that new member comes on board, we will then have a reorganization meeting to fill her spot so we could add it to the agenda at that time.
Sounds good.
So it might be good to do it all together instead of doing it now and then doing it again later. So that would be my recommendation to reconsider that at the next reorganization meeting once Mrs. White is, position's filled. No need for a motion. If you all are in consensus, we can do that for next meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And Dr. Hummer, you might be able to help me out with this. When is the next FCEF meeting?
It's in May. It's in May. It's, it's not an issue if we don't have somebody until this position is filled. We still will have enough members to, to hold and conduct our meetings. We've been having meetings and, and no offense to Mr. Bell, but he wasn't at those previous meetings. We were able to move forward and have those conversations. So I appreciate that sentiment, Mr. Atkins, but we should be fine. I know Dr. Angelo sits on that with me and there shouldn't be any issues with not having anybody on there until we can fill it.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? So, Dr. Hummer, I move that we table that, or that we postpone definitely until our reorganization meeting after Mrs. White's replacement.
I think I would have to make that motion. You can't make the motion.
If I could make a recommendation, I don't think it requires a motion. I'm looking at Mrs. Jordan there. If we can just push that to the next meeting.
Bell will remain the, the assigned member to that committee, and then once we get to that additional meeting, we can do the reassignments at that time and that will require a motion.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
No need for a motion.
Okay.
And, and just for clarification, I did ask if they could move their meetings to accommodate my timeframe, and I, they obviously couldn't, so I just wanna make it clear that it's not something I didn't wanna do, it's something I did, I really did wanna do. But being a teacher, it's hard to take time away from the students, any more time away from the students than I've already had to take. So that's why my decision has been made.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next up on the agenda is the motion for filling the board member vacancy that will go into effect on June 1st. So I had shared with you all a tentative timeline of what those next steps will be. I also wanna make sure it's very clear, as I mentioned to you all, is that this is your process. I am going to guide you through this particular process in collaboration with our attorneys. I just wanna make sure that, that I'm very, very clear on that. So essentially, you have three options and based on conversations, I think we have an idea of the direction you wanna go in as a board, but you all will vote on that. And those three options are, you can appoint somebody until a special election in November, which we will work through that process to petition the courts to do that. We have the documentation to move forward that if you decide to do that. The, the second option is, is that you would essentially petition the courts now to have a special election prior to November. There is a cost to that, so you need to keep that in mind. And then thirdly is you would not fill it, but potentially the courts could get involved to take it into their hands to fill that position. So there is a motion before you, and then based on that decision, we can talk about tentative next steps. So that's what I would recommend, Madam Chair, is based on the motion that you all decide to do, and then I can talk about those next steps this evening.
Great, thank you.
And then, of course, be able to answer any questions you have before you make that motion.
Do I make the motion now?
No, no, no. Madam Chair, make the motion now, and then based on what you decide, I can fill in what those next steps are, but I can also ask, answer any questions that you might have about each of those options if you would like for me to discuss those.
Okay. I think we should discuss it just a little, a little first before we make that motion. Any discussion on the three options that Dr. Hummer proposed?
Madam Chair, I don't want to have the taxpayers and crew anything for a special election. I think, you know, when Ms. White resigns, I think either appointing somebody through option two or having that third option, which I would hate for the courts to get involved on it, but, you know, having the vote, a consensus vote amongst the board members for a replacement would, would benefit the community and the board as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I agree with Miles. I think that the appointment option is probably in our best interest, but I want to educate the public as to what that would mean. There is a potential for three possible board members in this sort of influx. If there's a board member appointed, come November, a special election would be held, correct me if I'm wrong, and a potentially new board member could be elected. And then when Ms. White's term ends next year, then we could get a possibly third candidate. But be that as it may, I agree with Miles that having a special election is an unnecessary cost to everyone, and we certainly don't want the courts to dictate who we have serve with us. The appointment process will allow us to interview potential board candidates and choose as a body the best representative to fill that position for the six months until the November election. Thank you.
I also concur with the appointment factor. I think it's gonna save a lot of time and effort.
Ms. White?
I would agree that a special election would be an inappropriate use of taxpayer dollars. I do think that leaving the seat vacant for the upcoming election, in my opinion, would be the best. I think that the Red Bud District constituents deserve to have a say in who they want up here. So I think that's, you know, an advocacy of, of my district's constituents and them being able to have an active voice and choice in this process. That's what I would advocate for, but I understand that, that might not be the case, so, thank you.
So, and Ms. White, I hear you loud and clear, and I, I agree. I do think though, to leave your seat vacant, that leaves us an even number, and then that incurs some other, some other issues as far as votes could potentially go. I do see that there could be some tumult with three possible folks sitting in that seat over the iterations of appointment versus election. There's pros and cons to all three. I, I would encourage, I, I am in favor of appointing. I would highly encourage as many people in the Red Bud District to please, please apply for this position. Please do. Please spread the word. As soon as we work with Dr. Hummer and his team to get that application out in live, please, we, I'm sure it will be shared on the Facebook page, social media outlets and other means. So please do encourage those that you think that are, that would be interested and have a passion for this, for serving their citizens and these students to please apply. Any further comments? And may I have a motion?
I make a motion for the board vacancy, board member vacancy to be an appointment.
Madam Chair, if I may, there was a motion that we had prepared. If we can read the motion, that is...
I'll get it. Madam Chair?
Sorry, thank you.
With the recent resignation of Ms. White, I move that the Frederick County School Board authorize and initiate the proceedings necessary to appoint a board member to fill the Red Bud District position once it becomes vacant on May 31st, 2024, and to serve until an upcoming special election fills this position. I further move that the chair have the authority to execute the necessary documentation, if any related thereto.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, and Madam Clerk, could we get another rising count? This is a very important topic.
Ms. White?
No.
Mr. Funas?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
So we're, we're, let me get this clear. We're voting to, to choose someone to fill this...
You will be appointing, yes.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Mr. Sturdevent?
Yes.
I would like to amend my vote. I meant the yes.
Yes, okay. Madam Chair, motion passes.
Motion passes, thank you.
So, so Madam Chair, the, the next steps will be, we will post this position no later than next week. Applications will be sent here to our office, to your clerk, and then we will share those applications with you. We will keep that window open. Based on how long you would wish to desire, the proposed would be two weeks. We can go longer if you desire to do that. We will then have conversations about how you would like to conduct the, the interviews. And those can go one of two ways. They can either go in closed session or open session, but again, that is up to you all about how you wish to decide. The timeline would be, we also have to have a public hearing in regards to the candidates that you all will be deciding upon, and that hearing will be in June. And then the recommendation will be have a special meeting prior to June 25th. The reason being is that we would hopeful to have that person named before June 25th so then they can sit on that June 25th meeting. We will go through swearing them in, and then we'll also have the organizational meeting during that time. It's also, I, I need to mention the, the two timelines with this. The first timeline is, starting June 1st, we have 45 days to fill this position. And secondly, we also have to petition the courts by June 15th, I think is the date, but we have to petition the courts to have that special election in November.
Okay.
Okay? We'll continue to have those conversations, and we'll work with, with the chair, and then, of course, we'll be sharing that information with you, and then I'll continue to provide you updates as we move forward. But this position will be posted next week.
Okay.
And then any questions that you have, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do believe in June, before this appoint would take place and we would do the restructuring, we would have an instruction committee meeting, which Ms. White leads. Would we be able to postpone that until after the reorganization meeting? That way gives everybody a fair shake.
So I'm, I'm actually looking at Dr. Angelo, and I think, because we had this conversation the other day, and based on our conversation, all of our timed information items will be done in May, so we will be able to push that instructional meeting until that organizational meeting happens. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Atkins. Dr. Angelo, can you see any issues with that?
If we have a textbook adoption in June, we just need to get that in before July 1st.
But we'll have that conversation in May though, correct?
We should be able to have the conversation.
Yeah. So, so essentially what we're saying is, we'll be able to have that instructional committee meeting prior to Mrs. White coming off of the board. But if push comes to shove, Madam Chair, Mr. Atkins, is that we could call a special called meeting if we have to have that reorganization, if there is a time-sensitive meeting. I think we'll be fine, but again, we, we can have that conversation if we need to, after we take a look at our items of having that organizational meeting in May, we can also do that as well.
I know Ms. White's a valued member on the Building and Grounds Committee as well. I, I would hope that we move that. You know, I really appreciate her input on there. So I, you know, if we, Mr. Goodwin, if we have anything, then I'd like to see if we could push that back as well.
By May 31st. Yes, sir. Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Madam Chair?
Okay.
Okay. All right. The last item up for consideration, I was requested to add this to the agenda, is the request for school board members to have access to the health insurance that is accessible for our full-time employees. So this would be two items for you all to take into consideration. This is a first reading, so you will not be voting on that, on that this evening because it will be a bylaw, and that is posted to Board Docs. You should have it there in front of you. But essentially, what this updates the bylaw is, is it states that you all will have access to those health benefits as for a full-time employee. A couple things to, to keep in mind with this, because we did have, we did find a state code that also dictates this, and essentially it says that you all can receive a stipend, which you do, and if you do receive any sort of benefits, it calls it employee benefits, there also needs to be a resolution that goes along with that. So essentially what's gonna happen, there's a first reading, so you all, if you all have any questions, I can answer them at this time. And then in May, you all will vote on this, and if you all vote to approve it, you also will have to vote on a resolution as well, which will entail the details of if you all access those health benefits. Because, with that being said, with the health benefits to keep in mind, there is an employee cost, and there's also a school division cost, and there's also something called a stop loss. So for example, for our employees, for our full-time employees, if, God forbid, something happened and they had a situation that went above $250,000, because we're self-insured, the insurance company will pick up that cost. But since you all are not technically in full-time employees, if that goes above $250,000, it would fall on the school division to pay for that. So that's something that you need to keep in mind as well. We just, again, wanna make sure we keep you fully informed. Then Mrs. Camery, please chime in if I missed anything there. I do have some estimated costs here, because again, it's, it's different based on if you're doing individual, if you're doing plus a child, or plus spouse, or if you're doing your family, as well as adding dental and, and other options there. So, so for example, if I can give you all just a quick brief here, and this will be shared with you all as well through the resolution, but if it's employee only, it is an $86 monthly cost for the employee, and please, Mrs. Camery, chime in if I'm missing anything here. I mean, the employer cost would be $556, and that's per month. Okay? If it is a plus child, it's $169 for the employee and then $871 for the school division to pay. And then it goes up from there. Of course, if you want dental, that will increase, it go up to, it looks like about $5, $6 to $91 for employee only, $587 for the school division to pay, those premiums. So again, wanted just to provide that information to you, and if you have any questions, I'm able to answer them that at this time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Dr. Hummer, the, you said per child, is it, is it one caught, like, does it determine how, like, how many children?
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mrs. Camery can answer that question.
No, it's up to however many children you have. So it's not per child. If you have five children, it's still employee per child. When you get another spouse, then you're into the family.
If I get another spouse?
I'm sorry, if you get a spouse. No, please don't do that.
Please don't watch this.
Sorry about that. If you, if you add your spouse, maybe, thank you, then you're, it's a family level.
Words matter.
What was the family rate?
So the, the family rate would be $592 for the employee and $1,166 for the school division.
Come on.
Per month.
I have a question. The way that I read this draft is, it is not a, our stipend or the benefits, it's our stipend and the benefits. Am I reading that correctly?
That is how it's currently written, correct, Madam Chair.
So, if I'm reading the numbers correctly, again, numbers person here, so if I'm interpreting this incorrectly, please do tell me. So it says that this will cost the school division between $6,679.72, and then plus $1,000 for an HSA, should the individual choose to take that. So when you say it's going to cost the school division, it's essentially going to pass the cost on to the taxpayers. So, Ms. Camery, question for you, which fund would this come out of?
We do have a health insurance fund, so we have a separate fund. All this money pours in, the employee portion and the employer's portion.
So this is a separate, we would be combined into essentially the, the regular fund, there's no separate.
That's right.
Okay, so, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Camery, I think we had a conversation during one of our finance committee meetings, or perhaps it was one of our side conversations where I was asking newbie questions, as I am new in the seat. I remember that there was a number, if it was close to, I think, a million dollars potentially, that the cost could incur per person, that Frederick County Public Schools could incur per individual? Is that...
Oh, the over $250,000. He's talking about the stop loss?
That's the stop loss.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Over that.
Over that.
Correct.
Anything, we have a separate policy that we buy as self-insured, that helps with anyone in our plan to go over $250,000, but that's for full-time people. It would not cover some, yourselves as part-time.
Okay, so just doing some quick back-of-the-napkin math, there's seven of us, so let's say seven of us buy into this plan, so essentially, we could cost seven times 250 is what, so that's, five, five, public math, 1.5. We could incur, we could incur a lot of money to the school district, in theory, okay. I understand this is our first reading of this policy, thank you, 1.75 million, okay. Potentially, a worst-case scenario, I'm a worst-case scenario thinker too, plan for the worst and hope for the best, so 1.75 million incurred to the school district out of the health insurance fund, which ultimately is funded by taxpayer dollars. Okay. So this is, I know it's our first reading, but this is where my, where, where I sit right now, here tonight. I, I did a stint in the military as an officer, and there are things that you expect, and there's expectations in that position. Rank has its privileges and rank has its responsibilities, and more often than not, the responsibilities far outweigh the privileges. To me, the privilege of this position is I get to impact my community, I get to represent constituents, and I get to help our students. That is a huge, huge side benefit. We all got into this position knowing the rules of engagement. We were not expecting health insurance in this position. I personally, and perhaps call me, this is my naivete, but I did not expect a stipend in this position. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the board, but if it were me, I would have the stipend removed, because that is taxpayer dollars, perhaps once I get a little more comfortable in this seat in the next year or two, that may be something that I get on the agenda, so give me a few, give me some time. But that's just me. So where I sit on this is, I don't approve this, I don't like this at all, one single bit, but that's just me.
Madam Chair, so I think we're just scratching the surface with 1.75. What if somebody has a heart attack, or, God forbid, a life-altering illness, where it goes over and above, and we're going to charge the taxpayer that, and we're sitting here asking the taxpayer for a fourth high school right now? We want to tack on extra money? It's irresponsible, and to your point, it's service above self. You know, we come into this position knowing what we're doing as far as coming in and, and, you know, serving the community, just like, just like you, just like a couple other board members up here, we've served in the military, we kind of know what we're getting into when we're going out to help serve the communities that, that we're in, and yeah, in no way, shape, or form would I ever support this. You don't get on this board to try to reap benefits like that. You know, so if we were voting on this today, which I know is just the first reading, so it's not something voted on, it'd be a big no for me, and, and the reason is, that money can go to help better our students, give our teachers raises, entice teachers to come in, and, no, this, this, this just sounds selfish, so I'm a, I'm a big no for this.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, sir.
I echo Ms. Klein and Ms., Mr. Atkins, in what they feel, and how they feel about this particular issue. Personally, I'm very fortunate that my wife has exceptional benefits, so I wouldn't need to take advantage of this anyway. Say what? So because I have two, I'm able to get both benefits, it just depends on which state I'm in. That's all right. A little Charles Corlent never hurt anyone, right? Anyway, but I would like to stipulate that if there is someone on this body that would like to take advantage of health insurance, I believe that the, the resources that we have at our disposal could help that person or persons find comparable healthcare at a comparable rate. Am I incorrect in thinking that, Dr. Hummer?
Please say that again, sir.
What I said was that if there is a member that's interested in, in getting health insurance on this body, that that particular person or persons could go to and use the resources that we have to help them find that particular type of insurance at a comparable rate and comparable coverage.
So, yes, and that, that was going to be one of the things I was going to mention. If you all decide not to move forward with this, our third-party vendor is more than happy to sit down with whatever member is interested in some health insurance, but again, that would be on you all in regards to pay, and it would be no cost to the school division, and we can definitely help you. There are insurances out there for individuals that needed who currently don't have insurance, and our third-party vendor is more than happy to sit down with whichever board member is interested in that, and we can, we can definitely establish that.
That's excellent, yes, I like that.
Thank you.
How did this all come about?
A request came forward for me to add this to the agenda.
By whom?
By the school board, school board members.
Wasn't me. Who did it?
Definitely wasn't.
It was not me.
Not me.
I don't think it really matters.
Yeah.
I don't need insurance, so I'm...
Any, any further comment? Well, I think we have some things to mull over, and perhaps a little shock and awe, I'll, I'll go over as well. Anyone else have any comments? No? Thank you, Dr.
That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Do we have to do the first reading?
This is the first reading.
It just says first reading, that's it, yes.
First reading.
Yep.
And we're done. That's it.
All right, well, we're at the point in our meeting where we have Board Member comments. Anybody have any comments?
First, I'd like to go ahead and thank, and recognize all of our students tonight that came up for awards. We had local, state, and national awards. I mean, think about the impact that Frederick County Public Schools has had on these kids' lives, teachers out there, you know, I know there's still a couple of y'all out here, you know, the parents that, that go out and support these students, late nights, you know, we've had students with the FFA, DECA, FPLA, the students from Stonewall, they're learning not only life skills, but how to socially, socially interact with other students and other community members. It's great life skills that, that'll open up a brighter future for these students. We had a student, can't, can't remember her last name, but Ms. Sidney, with the FCLA, providing books throughout the community and encouraging literacy, going out, hitting all the, the little libraries out throughout Frederick County, that's just amazing. Then we have some teachers and staff. The Apple Award went to Ms. Pingley. All those accomplishments that she had, that directly impacts other teachers out there, other students, and it's, it's amazing to see that. We had the Inspiration Award go to Mr. Hinderlight, the bus driver, that, that individual has the first and last interaction with the student every day. That can make or break the student's day, that can curtail their whole learning experience throughout the day, you know, so hats off to all of our bus drivers out there, but it's good to see that he got the Inspiration Award. Our nursing staff, our teachers that, that got recognized, you know, some of these people, take for instance our nurses, all right? Hopefully, none of our students have to see our nurses throughout the day, but guess what? They're tying up their, their shoes every morning, getting to work, and making sure that we have a safe and fit student out there, you know? Any, any kind of little Band-Aids or sniffles or anything, and the stuff that they have to deal with, they're not coming in with a happy student, they're, they're coming in with a sad student, a sick student, somebody, his child is in there, and they're the first person that's making contact with that sick child that day. Hats off to, you know, our administration for hiring these people that come in, you know? We're setting forth quite a great example with the staff that we're getting. Our new facilities coordinator, thank you for coming in, got my NFPA 870 as well, and all my OSHA stuff, but it's, it's good to see that we've got, you know, people moving up to great positions within our schools, to make sure that they run proper and, and function, and we're being good stewards of our dollar and taking care of our equipment and our schools that are out there. I didn't get to make a comment earlier, but I'll do it now about the data science lab. That's going to be such a, a great addition over at Dow J. Not only will we have that data science lab, but it comes with the grant to actually refurbish that area and get some much-needed AC in there for summertime, you know, it, these students, it's tough for them to learn when it's really hot, really cold, how would you like to be sitting in a, in a sweatbox all day and trying to learn, you know? So I appreciate that the staff has found the grants to make this happen, it's just another way that they go above and beyond every day. As far as, we had a comment about Robert's Rules earlier. Well, yes, we do have Robert's Rules in decorum while we're taking citizen comments, but we still have the Constitution, we still have Fourth Amendment rights to privacy, and we still have a First Amendment right, so if that, that individual who spoke hurt somebody's feelings, I'm sorry, but they still have constitutional rights. Well, you can shake your head, but they do. Other than that, I have nothing else.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Again, congratulations to all of the students, the teachers, the nurses, the volunteers, for all of the work that they do in and out of the schools. I think it's wonderful. This is my favorite part of these meetings every month, that I, I look forward to it. Unfortunately, last month, my son had the opportunity, but he, for whatever reasons, didn't show up. Yes, I'm still going to call him a knucklehead. But I do want to recognize a student group that wasn't here tonight. The track and field team at Sherrando, specifically the four-by-800 team, which my son is a part of, has been invited to compete at the Penn Relays, which is a huge honor to be able to go and do that, so kudos to those four boys, and hopefully, they do well in their race. I'd also like to thank all of those who came up to speak. I'm a civics teacher, I think it's wonderful that, you know, people come here and some, every single month, come here to make comments, but I also, I was very heartened by the group of students that came through. Whether you agree with what their message was or not is irrelevant, but the fact that they found something to be involved with that, that caused them to, to stand up for something that they believe in, I just, I think is wonderful. Regardless if I agree or disagree, or anyone else agrees or disagrees, the fact that they found something that meant something to them and came here and spoke, I think is a good sign for our nation and a very healthy sign for our nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. All right, seeing no other comments? This brings us to the end of... Oh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I just wish to apologize to the board for not being there this evening, but I just really did not feel well enough to sit there this evening, so I apologize for not being there. And in regards to the Robert Rules comment, I'm not going to stop somebody from speaking if they forget to mention their magisterial district. I believe that people should have a right to be heard, and that's where I'm going to leave that comment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And any, anyone else with comments? All right, well, it looks like we've reached the point in our meeting, we're at the end of our agenda, and, oh, we're not quite there, we have announcements. So our next school board meeting will be May 21, 2024, so please do, please do attend, it'll be a big one, so, so please do, try to make an effort to attend, and there's that, and also too, if I could give a plug to Mr. Bell, he's been doing some kind of open houses meetings, right? No? I thought they, okay, good, all right, because I want to, I want to get that out there, and it's something, he's a great example for all of us, it's something that I, that I would like to get out and do too. This can be somewhat daunting up here, so Mr. Bell's been holding kind of some town halls on the weekends, just to, kind of a coffee hour, I think Dr. Hummer's been able to make a few of those. So those are being advertised via the Facebook pages, so Tara is helping us get the word out about that, so please do stay tuned to the Facebook pages, please do, once Mr. Bell has another one, and then if any of us also have those, please, please do come, and we do want to hear your voices, we want to hear your opinions, so.
Yeah, the next one is on April 27, and that's going to be at Anthony's Pizza at 11:00 AM. So come, hang out for an hour, then have lunch, on you.
All right, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to extend, I mean, adjourn the board meeting for this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table, it's been properly seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you all.